All right. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law in section one oh one point zero two one of the codified ordinance of Cleveland, Ohio nineteen seventy six, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the city planning department conducts its meetings according to Robert's rules of order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx stream. Call in users can unmute by using star six. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being live streamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter via our website and email have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Mr. Chairman, the meeting is yours.
Thank you. Michael call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Present.
Downing.
Present.
Booker.
Present.
Curry.
Present.
McCray Scott.
Present.
Paul.
Slide.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Uh, the first was a lot consolidation lot split for permanent parcel number zero zero two three two zero nine eight eighteen eighty nine West fifty fourth street. Who's here for this one? Worries? Someone's muted. I can't hear them.
Oh, they hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, Larry Apple, principal of Elmhurst Homes.
Hey, Larry.
This is a request for a lot split on at eighteen eighty nine West fifty fourth street, which is near Bridge. I have built and sold two other lots on this street. This last split was reviewed by the planning department. We received a comment from Adam Davenport, May, May seventh. Paul, this is great stuff. Please propose more of these. It was subsequently reviewed and approved by the housing design review committee. The proposal is to build two single family homes comparable to other homes on adjacent lots on the street as shown in the accompanying photos.
Sir, all these shotgun style, Larry? The design?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I move approval. This is Lillian.
I'll second Downing.
We have a motion second, uh, further discussion.
Yeah, I, this is August, Mr. Chair. Today I'm trying to understand why there's a jog in the, in the proposed property split.
Uh, that jog follows the property line. Okay, thank you.
Michael call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul, I'm sorry, she's not here. Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck, Larry.
Thank you.
Next is mandatory referral. It's unnumbered. This is in Councilman McCormick's ward. McCormick's ward. I'm getting feedback. I'm getting feedback. And the commissioner of purchasing supplies to presently owned by Skyline Investment, Inc., where it's designated located at twenty four Public Square for the purpose of entering into the chain of title for the TIF. Who's here to talk about this one? Talk about this one?
Good morning. This is Cassandra Slansky from the Department of Economic Development.
Go ahead, Cassandra.
Skyline, hi. Skyline Investments is a Toronto, Canada based company that specializes in real estate investments with a focus on hotels and resorts. They started as one of Ontario's top developers in hospitality properties prior to expanding in the United States, most notably Ohio. They currently own the Hyatt Regency Hotel and Renaissance Telbo Hotel, both located in Cleveland. They purchased the Renaissance Hotel located at twenty four Public Square back in two thousand and fifteen, and they now have plans to fully renovate and rebrand the hotel. The building includes thirty four conference rooms, a banquet kitchen, a lobby reception, four hundred ninety one guest rooms, over thirteen thousand square feet of retail space and three hundred parking spaces. The total investment for this property is expected to exceed fifty six million. In order to assist with the project financing, the developer is requesting the city impose a thirty year TIF that will support the debt service. This project will be coming to design review at a later date, and the consultant for the project is available. And on the, at the meeting, he's going to briefly go over the project and can answer any additional questions there might be.
Morning, everyone.
Go ahead.
Thanks for the time. This is Steve Goodman. I'll be brief because you have the slide, uh, presentation there in front of you. Most of you probably know that are familiar with the Renaissance Hotel building. It's a, the hotel is over a hundred years old, is in the National Registry of Historic Places. It was operated as a Renaissance for the last, uh, last few years. That's a Marriott brand. Cassandra mentioned that we'll be rebranding the hotel. It will be rebranded as an autograph collection still in the Marriott family and their reservation system. The, like, it will be considered an upbranding from the Renaissance by going to a collection or a soft brand like autograph collection and allow us to take advantage and not disturb the historic fabric of the hotel. But the renovation is substantial. You can see that kind of the breakdown in the presentation where everything from on the exterior, we're not altering the footprint or the, uh, or the basic configuration of the building, but we are, we will be cleaning the, the masonry, repairing the, uh, the sidewalks at that drop off spot at Office Superior, all new windows with, they'll be more energy and noise efficient throughout the entire building. Some additional LED lighting, which will, that's the, that will go in front of planning commission for their design review. And we're going to restore the original sign that has Hotel Cleveland. So this hotel will be known, known as the Hotel Cleveland or as we will refer to it, the Cleveland, but it'll be a Marriott Autograph Collection. You can, I wish we would have been able to provide more, uh, you know, photos from our brand book and the, because the interior upgrades are spectacular, uh, ranging from the meeting space, uh, to all four hundred ninety one guest rooms. We, a lot of it may appear to be cosmetic because we are obviously preserving the historic fabric, but we're, we'll open up the lobby, make it much more accessible from the street and inviting from the street in, in the, in the main floor. Not a lot other than, you know, looking pretty pictures to talk about, but about fourteen million dollars of work has already been completed on the renovation, new roof, new HVAC in the rooms. That'll be extended to the meeting spaces. And, uh, upgrades to mechanical and electrical in addition to all of the, the furniture fixtures and equipment things. You've seen some of the pictures.
Thank you, Steve. Commission members?
I move approval Downing.
Second Curry.
We have a motion second, further discussion. Steve, I just want to say I'm very glad you're doing this. It, it looks wonderful. Looking forward to the design review process.
Well, thank you so much.
Michael call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Diane, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Looking forward to seeing it. Um, administrative people, so everyone take a look.
Um, uh, I need to recuse myself from this one, the Fairfax one.
I is, I is
Foundation's involvement.
Same, same as, as, as Lillian.
So both of you are recusing yourself from Fairfax but voting on the other two.
Um, well, can I see the other two? Are we going through them one by one or?
I don't know. Okay. Yeah, I guess we are.
These are not mandated, these are not, these are
These are administrative approvals.
Yes.
So we have ordinance number seven oh two, uh, twenty twenty one.
I need to recuse myself from the second one as well, which is in Clark Carlton. Can I see the third one? That's it.
Northeastern Ohio Hispanic Center, Hispanic Center.
So I need to recuse myself from both of them.
From the two, but you can vote on the last one then.
What was the last one? There was only two.
No, she can, the second one is Blanket Mills and the third one is West Twenty Fifth Street.
Yeah, no, I need to recuse from all three.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move
Thank you, August. Where are you with these things?
I, again, I, I, I'm following Lillian on all three. I have to.
Okay.
I move approval Downing.
I'll second.
We have motion second, further discussion. Michael call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, special presentation, People's Street Payne Avenue project. Who's here for this one?
I, yes, Rachel Oscar Campus District. We've got several presenters, but, um, Cal, Cali, are you speaking ahead of, ahead of this?
Yes, thank you, Rachel. Hi, Chairman and the Commission. I'm Cali Mersman. I'm the Bicycle and Pedestrian Coordinator on staff and just wanted to provide a little bit of context for the following two special presentations. These groups are coming before you for approval from the City Planning Commission as part of the decorative street painting license process that the city has established in the codified ordinances, chapter five sixteen. So I just want to, um, read a couple of sections of those code to set the context here since I know that we don't often have these license applications come before us. As you may remember or be familiar with, this decorative street painting license process allows designs to be located on alleys, ways or courts at the intersection of two residential streets or a mid-block location of a residential street at a crosswalk marked with two white horizontal lines and/or a designated bicycle lane. And the purpose of this ordinance and program that the city has is, um, to make city streets attractive environments, to encourage and support communities, to work cooperatively, to beautify neighborhoods, to encourage civic engagement on the part of residents and stakeholders, and to encourage well-designed, creative and aesthetically pleasing decorative street paintings that relate to the history and culture of the neighborhood. So I think that you'll see in these upcoming presentations that all of those, um, goals and objectives of this program are met as well as some pedestrian safety enhancements proposed by the paintings that they are, that they will be sharing with you. The final bit of context here is that this license application has several sign offs. Planning Commission is one of them, and so your vote today will allow Director Collier to sign up on the license. It will also be routed to Capital Projects and Traffic Engineering. The council members in these locations also have the ability to raise an objection to, um, to the proposal, although for these two cases specifically, the council members have been kept apprised and are familiar and supportive of what is being proposed. So with, with that context, I'll stay around to answer any questions or provide any additional guidance needed, but I will hand it over to Rachel and the People's Streets team now to continue with their presentation.
Thank you.
Great. Once we have the slide up, Rachel Price, do you take it away?
Okay, thank you. Okay, so People's Streets is a grass group, or grassroots group of volunteers from varying backgrounds, and, uh, we came together because we envisioned creating connections between diverse neighborhoods that are safe for all modes of transportation. This conversation began last summer, summer of twenty twenty, and the working group, um, has been working together since the winter of, um, twenty twenty one. We've met twice a month since then, brainstorming and prioritizing our plan, which include an audit of Payne Avenue, which is pictured here. Next slide. The project expands along Payne Avenue between East Thirteenth and East Fifty Fifth Street and includes temporary painting of crosswalks, curb extensions and restriping of the bridge over I ninety with decorative elements like planner boxes. The purpose of this project is to create an enhanced experience for pedestrians that is safe for all modes of transportation. These practices will slow traffic and ultimately improve the safety for all. Next slide. In a way, we were guided to select Payne Avenue. We're excited that a lot of the work we've been brainstorming, um, and plan to implement will be reflected in Payne Avenue's planned permanent changes in the future. Payne Avenue can better link communities and, uh, experiences because Payne Avenue is fifty eight feet street across. It includes six lanes that consist of four travel lanes and two parking lanes. So it's a super wide corridor that allows for ample currently underused space that can be enhanced to improve, improve the pedestrian experience. Next slide. Oh, sorry. Uh, this fall, we plan to do a learning lab that will help us understand the process so that we can efficiently paint the remaining crosswalks and stripe a section of the roadway with a new patterning with decorative elements in the spring of twenty twenty two. We see these as temporary installations, but we fully intend for the crosswalk paintings, paintings and roadway striping to stay up until the planned street resurfacing in twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four. Hey, next slide.
All right. Um, hi, my name is David Bass and I'll be taking over. Um, and yeah, I've been helping with preparing the schematics for our proposed work. So I'll walk us through the existing and proposed conditions at each intersection we have planned for. Here we're showing the pictures at East Twenty Second Street and East Twenty Third Street at Payne. At East Twenty Second Street, there are currently painted crosswalks around the full intersection. ADA ramps exist across East Twenty Second Street, but do not exist across Payne Avenue. Um, and it's important to note at this intersection, um, that it's a relatively high pedestrian and car traffic street due to the Campus International School, which is home to over seven hundred students and the Norma Hare, um, Women's Center, which supports over two hundred fifty women daily. And then at East Twenty Third, which is pictured to the left, um, there are no existing painted crosswalks. There are ADA ramps across East Twenty Third, um, but they do not exist across Payne. So if we go to the next slide, um, we can see our proposed schematics. Thanks. Um, so at East Twenty Second, we're proposing to aesthetically enhance all of the existing crosswalks and the curb extensions with temporary bollards on Payne at each corner and at temporary ADA ramps for crossing Payne. Uh, and then at East Twenty Third, we're proposing to add new crosswalks across East Twenty Third and at, and across Payne west of East Twenty Third. Also, uh, going to add curb extensions with temporary bollards on Payne and then add ADA ramps for crossing Payne. Note here that, um, for here and all of the subsequent intersections, the proposed painted colors and pattern within the crosswalks meet the current MUTCD guidelines requiring our tone colors and regular patterning. So that is it for this intersection. So next slide, please. So our next location is the Payne Avenue Bridge over the inner belt. Once again, uh, as Rachel mentioned before, the width across Payne is about fifty eight feet at crossing, or there's four lane, four, uh, lanes of traffic and two street parking lanes over on the bridge. Street parking is prohibited, um, so they are essentially unused lanes. We go to the next slide, we'll see our proposed conditions. So here we're proposing to reduce the roadway to one eleven foot car travel lane in each direction. And then this will allow for eight foot bike lanes on either side, um, that are buffered from the travel lanes by striping and barrier elements occupying the ten foot lane in each direction. The dimensions of the lane tapers and other striping elements follow the MUTCD guidelines, um, based on the posted speed limit of the road, which is twenty five miles an hour. And we identified this area, um, as the simplest location in the corridor for safely testing one, a reduction in the number of travel lanes to one in each direction and two, um, testing buffered protected bike lanes on this roadway. So move on to the next intersection. So here we're showing Payne and East Thirtieth. There are currently painted, uh, crosswalks and ADA curb ramps around the full intersection. Traffic and pedestrian volumes are relatively high at this intersection due to Asia Plaza at the northwest corner of the intersection and due to East Thirtieth being used as a primary north-southbound roadway leading to and from the inner belt ramps along Chester, just south of this location. And on field visits, we noticed that cars are often parked on East Thirtieth, north of Payne, um, in their right-hand northbound lane, which requires cars, uh, passing through the intersection in that lane to merge left immediately after passing through the intersection. So we address that in our proposed conditions on the next slide. So here, north is to the left, um, Asia Plaza is to the bottom left. And so at this intersection, we're proposing to aesthetically enhance all the crosswalks, um, and add a curb extension at both, at the northeast corner of Payne and East Thirtieth, along both Payne and East Thirtieth. And so by proposing the curb extension along East Thirtieth, we're, we'll be removing, uh, one of the northbound through lanes and we'll be adding signage and striping south of Payne to the right in this image, to require the right-hand northbound lane to become right turn only. So this should help to eliminate the dangerous merging that tends to happen, um, in the northbound direction, just north of the intersection. And the proposed right turn lane, um, signage and striping meets MUTCD standards and final details are being worked out with the Cleveland Traffic Engineering Department for approval on our schematic. That's it for this intersection. So, thanks. Um, so here is the intersection of Payne and East Thirty Second, which, uh, we should note is the learning lab location we're proposing for the coming months. So currently there are painted crosswalks and ADA curb ramps around the whole intersection. However, the curb ramp just east of Wanton four May at the northeast corner of the intersection is also a driveway curb cut serving the adjacent parking lot. And then East Thirty Second Street, north and south Payne are offset roadways and they're both one way heading towards Payne. And one additional note is that there is a new business that will be moving into the property at the northwest corner of the intersection. So if we move on to the next slide with the proposed conditions. So we are proposing to aesthetically enhance all of the existing crosswalks and we plan to reposition the stop bar on East Thirty Second Street, south of Payne, to be more than four feet from the existing crosswalk. This is per request from the Traffic Engineering Department. And our goal here, um, is that these crosswalk enhancements, particularly at the northeast corner, um, just east of Wanton four May, will help to establish the pedestrian crossing areas at the intersection more clearly. And then move on to the next slide. So here are the final set of intersections. At Payne and East Thirty Seventh, there's currently no signal crosswalk nor ADA ramps for crossing Payne. However, this is a, we, we noticed on field visits that this is a common unmarked crossing due to the Payne Commons commercial hub at the southeast corner of the intersection. Um, and then at Payne and East Thirty Ninth, which is the picture to the right, there is a striped crosswalk, um, crossing Payne Avenue, but there are no ADA compliant curb ramps. This crosswalk primarily serves residents of the Asian Evergreen Apartments Senior Living Facility at the northwest corner of Payne and East Thirty Ninth. So on the next slide, we can see the, our proposed conditions. At Payne and East Thirty Seventh, we're proposing a new crosswalk, um, curb extensions with temporary bollards and ADA ramps for crossing Payne just east of East Thirty Seventh Street. This should help to establish the pedestrian crossing area serving pedestrians that already use this location despite being unmarked. Um, and then at Payne and East Thirty Ninth, we're proposing, uh, just about the same. We're, um, we're proposing to aesthetically enhance the existing crosswalk, um, add new curb extensions with temporary bollards and add temporary ADA ramps. So this should help to more clearly establish the crosswalk across the roadway and make it more accessible for use by, uh, disabled pedestrians. And with that, I will also cover, um, on the next slide, the materials and maintenance. So here we're showing many of the materials, um, that we're planning to use along with the anticipated maintenance needs. We are working closely with Noaca and their, um, street supplies program to determine the appropriate materials for the project. Noaca has a library of tested materials for projects like this, um, including paint, paint applicators, stencils, bollards, bolts, ADA ramps, um, that we'll have access to. In terms of paint, Noaca has identified the UCCS brand Strike X Paint is the, the best option for pilot projects such as this. We, in terms of maintenance, anticipate that it will require annual touch-ups, um, until the street resurfacing project commences. For bollards, our first choice is to use flexible delineators, uh, bolted to the pavement available through Noaca's library. However, these will need to be approved by the Traffic Engineering Department. If these are not approved, our backup option is to use regular delineator posts with flat bottoms, um, available through Noaca's library. And we would add, use adhesive pads on the bottom designed for, for asphalt, um, to make them a little bit more permanent. Um, but regardless of the option that we choose, or that we move forward with, these delineators will be removed, um, in the beginning of the winter, uh, to allow for snow removal. And then lastly, with, with ADA ramps, uh, Noaca has a few ADA ramps that are available for use, but we are currently working with them to determine if better options are available. No curb ramps will be installed, um, until the spring. We don't need any at the learning lab location. And then, so we have a little bit of time to determine the best option. And then, like the bollards, all ADA ramps will either be bolted or adhere to the pavement and sidewalk and will be removed in the winter to allow for snow removal. And then lastly, this, given our, our timeline mentioned earlier, we intend to use the learning lab. This fall is a way to assess the materials we use and to refine our material selection and to better understand the maintenance needs we have moving forward. So with that, I guess I'll pass it off to Paris, uh, to talk about the aesthetic design choices.
Thanks, David. Hi, Commission. Um, this is Kara Singh, um, from Midtown Cleveland. I'm the Director of Asia Town Initiative, working closely with this group along with Rachel. And, um, so we just wanted to show a little bit more detail of the painting crosswalk design and just emphasize that the group worked really closely to adhere with the FHWA crosswalk guidance, um, and have been working to incorporate feedback as David has been mentioning all along, with from traffic and engineering. And so we just wanted to highlight that this, uh, design was inspired by existing patterns, uh, along the streetscape. These are our blade signs, um, in Asia Town that just kind of emphasize the neighborhood identity and some of our branding from our website and, um, overall neighborhood branding. So excited to be able to use this pattern, um, to, um, enhance the streetscape atmosphere and the safety of the street. Also, I just wanted to emphasize, um, again, how wide the street is, how little traffic there is. We often see families, especially with strollers, racing across the street, both on marked and unmarked crossings or folks, elderly, citizen, or residents with, with walkers. both on marked and unmarked crossings, or folks, elderly, citizens, or residents with walkers kind of racing across the street. And so I think overall, this project both enhances existing crosswalks to make it a safer experience for pedestrians and, as David has mentioned, added amenities that really should be there already, like ADA, ADA crosswalks on, on certain marked crosswalks. So again, just wanted to emphasize that this is a temporary demonstration opportunity since we know that Payne could be on the docket for resurfacing in the coming years. Next slide, please. And just to cap it off, we're just excited to let you all know that we've been working on this for a while. We've gotten a commitment from Spin Streets to support the project as well for the temporary demonstration and engagement opportunities about the street. As David has mentioned, we're working with Noaka to use their Street Supplies Program. And then also, our, our group is made up of a coalition of a lot of different stakeholders. So with that, I'll just thank you and see if there are any questions.
This is Lillian. I have just a question, quick question and a comment. Who's, just curious, who specifically is doing the work? Will it be the, who is actually, is it the city? Who's actually doing the installation?
So will be a group of us from the People's Streets, which is made up of volunteers from a number of different groups and residents.
So my comment then is, like, this is extraordinary. It's beyond amazing. I cannot thank you enough. It's kind of super exciting, but sad at the same time that this is not the norm. So, you know, it's sort of slightly shocking to me to hear this presentation and, and not realize that, you know, this is, this needs to be the normal. Like, you guys need to be a department of the city. Like, this should happen everywhere. And I know this is a pilot project, but, you know, it's a pilot project that, you know, honestly, we know this can work. We know how this, things are gonna, you know, work. So I just want to encourage the city, and I know Councilman Slith and McCormick and others are really working on the, the kind of, how Complete and Green Streets actually gets done. But this is really extraordinary. And so I thank you guys. I hope this is the norm and the model and sets the stage for just a way of doing business in this city for such a small amount of money. So I guess I'm making the case that you guys should just be, the city should just contract with you across the entire city. And it's unusual request, but I'm making it.
I would like to echo Lillian's sentiment. As, as a parent who raised his son from the womb to now at Syracuse University, our, his biggest fear initially was trying to navigate the streets when we were riding our bikes. And, and that's a shame because we committed to be in this city. We choose to be in Cleveland. And, and, and we have to fear about the welfare of our son and our lives. So I, I take my hat out to you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Director Collier. I'd like to make a couple of points. First and foremost, of course, this is a great initiative and a great job. And I would be remiss if I didn't indicate that this initiative and the work has been closely guided by city planning staff. I do want to emphasize that. The other thing that we have been focusing, focusing on, which you all are aware, and we're right in the midst of, is Division Zero Action Plan. And that's an initiative that is a collaboration, looking at how to make our streets safer. So with respect to the bicycle amenities and other things that are being piloted here, this is something that there is a lot of coordination around. And that includes, you know, the city, you know, namely, you know, our division. So I just want to make it, you know, clear that the North Star, I think for everyone, is to have, Green and Complete Streets is to have, you know, bicycle amenities and mode choice for individuals. And I don't know how much more, as a division, at least with the Planning Department, we can emphasize and promote that. So I just think that should be acknowledged by the Planning Commission. And also, you know, I know it's acknowledged by many in the community. Thank you.
Yep, Fred, I was not criticizing the Planning Department. I know you guys are a huge champion. What I'm saying is this is paint and some good thought. And it's not you guys. It's the, the Engineering and, and the Streets Department that could paint this every day across the city. So this is not a knock on you. I know you guys care. I know you're doing all this, this work. It is a very simple sort of directive that could be made to our Streets Department to make this the norm. And because they have the paint, they are out there every day. This is a, do you have the will to do this or not and get it done? It is not a planning problem, so I'm not criticizing you, Fred. I'm criticizing the fact that this should be an everyday action by, by a department that has the money, the resources, and it's out there every day.
And I appreciate that. And I didn't take offense. I just wanted to know that, you know, you know, we know culturally how some things and culture strategy for purpose, we know this. But I just wanted to be, you know, clear that, you know, we are clear of the opportunities out there and where the world is going. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we also have Callie.
Oh, Callie, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just to add to what Director Collier said and to Commissioner Curry's remarks, one of the great things about this Payne Avenue project is, as many of the presenters said, we do anticipate a resurfacing project coming through in the future. And, you know, Payne isn't a street that has a T L C I specifically with corridor recommendations. So what we've been able to do through the Planning Department and coordination with the other city departments mentioned, including Public Works, Traffic Engineering, is to work with the community to sort of document these desires, these enhancements, and have them on a temporary basis to both inform the scope of the, the final capital project as well as to have and start that community conversation early in the process before grants are even written to fund that resurfacing. So from that perspective, we do see this as, as a shift toward a more ideal process in conversation with the community and city departments in terms of what is needed on streets, bringing about that, that type of intervention sooner, rather than waiting for the final project and then informing what the final project looks like.
Thanks, Callie. I guess my one question is, who's actually gonna physically do the work and the equipment and that type of things? Because there's people that do that for a living and probably have some technical capabilities that it would be great to get them as part of the team. So who's?
Right now, right now, it's planned to be all, sorry, Rachel Oscar from Campus District and People's. Hi, thanks for the question. Right now, it's planned to be a volunteer effort with the guidance of a professional artist. We're partnered with Ingenuity Cleveland. The purpose of the Fall Learning Lab is so that we can get a good handle on how this is done and work with an artist so that it is, it's teed up to work successfully in the spring. I, I hear your recommendations about bringing in, we have discussed, you know, is, because the, because the scope is large, you know, using some of our funds to bring in some additional professional help if needed.
Okay, i- if you want, you can reach out to me and I'll try to get you hooked up with some people that actually own the equipment. And maybe you could do it if that's what you want to do, but at least you have the right equipment to do it with.
Yeah, and we're very fortunate. The Street Supplies Library from Noaka does, they have several pieces of equipment to, to help us do this. So it's not just, you know, bringing out small paintbrushes, but they have the street equipment as well. And, but, yes, we would be glad, you know, any additional resources, we're, we're extremely open to, and thank you for that offer.
Sure.
What would make me feel better, David, would be that someone from Engineering and Construction would have been at this meeting saying, "We endorse this. We support this. We're gonna be out there. We're gonna help." Like, this is crazy. I mean, where, where is Engineering and Construction today saying, "We're part of this team. We're working with planning. This is exciting. We, we're gonna learn from this too." You know, I, I, I'm actually shocked, right? They have all the equipment, David. They do this every day. Where is the leadership on this, right? These are basic crosswalks that don't even exist. So I don't mean to be so animated, but this is slightly shocking to me.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else? Michael, call the roll, please.
Mr. Chairman, we have not had a motion or a second yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I moved to approve.
And you were animated. Would you like to make a motion?
Uh, Mike, uh, August did. I would second it. But I would add with accommodation if he would. I, I, I think this is extraordinary.
I guess, will you do that?
Yes, I would like to point out that this is, this is an awesome first step. And we, we would like to bestow the highest level of accommodation to this effort. Thank you.
There you go. So we have a motion, a second with accommodations. And Michael, call the roll, please.
Boeing.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker. Yes. Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And then the next one is the Warsaw Street Painting Project. Who's here for this?
Good morning. I'm Joe Linsky of Slavic Village Development. And I'm joined by Tiffany Andrioli, who is a resident in the neighborhood who is leading this project. So today, we are here to present the Warsaw Triangle Street Paint Project. Similar to the previous project, our goal is to paint curb extensions in the Warsaw neighborhood of Slavic Village. Next slide, please. So here's a sample of what we're proposing, a little more simple. But we've had issues with traffic in this neighborhood, which I'll zoom out in a moment and show you exactly where we're at. But we're proposing to paint five of these curb extensions in the neighborhood at three different intersections in areas that have had recent traffic issues along them. So this one's at the corner of East Sixty-seventh and Seabert. The other two, which we'll see in a moment, are at East Sixty-ninth and Seabert and East Sixty-ninth and Chambers Avenue. Next, please. So this is a response that our, a few of our residents reached out to Slavic Village Development, the council person about, because there was a lot of, especially over the last twelve months, a lot of erratic traffic. As you can see, right across the street here, this is at Sixty-ninth and Seabert Avenue. This house here in the corner has been hit multiple times in the last twelve months by vehicles that, quite frankly, are, are not paying attention. And eventually, the councilman had to have ballards assembled in the tree on here just to prevent cars from hitting this house any longer. So we want to be more preventative than reactive in doing this. So our proposal is on right-hand turns that cars extend out a little bit farther so they're a little bit more aware of the street as they're making these turns. You can't see it here, but the front of this house also was hit as well. So yeah, the goal is really to make safer streets in the neighborhood here. Next slide. So if you're familiar with Slavic Village, this area that we've come to, Noah's Z or Shava Triangle, is kind of wedged between Fleet Avenue, East Sixty-fifth and Broadway, which cuts across the top there down, down south. So it gets a lot of traffic from people who don't necessarily live in the neighborhood here. You have Third Federal just outside, so we have traffic from them. Cleveland Central Catholic, where you can see their field there. They, we have students here. And then, of course, we get a lot of commercial activity on, on Broadway and Fleet Avenue and Sixty-fifth that kind of connects them. So there's a lot of traffic that comes through here in the neighborhood, especially down Sixty-ninth. And the residents here, you know, they're, they've been kind of tired of some of this traffic, not paying attention to speed limits and, and traffic signs. And we were able to work with Callie and Commissioner Mayvic to do a street count back in just about a year ago now. And the speeds weren't always consistently high, but the ones that were really drove through the neighborhood fast. Next slide, please. Like I said, this is a community-driven project. Two of our community stewards have gone through Slavic Village Developments Community Stewart Program. Tiffany Andrioli and Joy Cummings are the ones who brought upon this, this project. So they wanted to address safety in the neighborhood. And as a part of it, stopping this traffic was, was a big piece because them and several other neighbors who have experienced traffic-related issues as a part of the, I guess, recent block club that's been developed, have expressed this as a major point of concern. So among this project, they've also, over the last year, hosted their own neighborhood events, done a lot of door knocking and flyering to engage neighbors, had neighborhood meetings, and are planting trees as well. So this is a part of a larger safety context for the neighborhood. And I don't know, Tiffany's on the call with us, if you wanted to speak up at all about this.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Joe just asked me to speak a little bit about kind of where this project came from. And so Ms. Ms. Cummings and I were trained as community stewards in 2020 and went through, with a group of twenty other residents, a number of trainings and started talking about community, community issues and how we address them. So with that, we started talking to more neighbors. And, you know, as we all know, safety is a top concern in our, in our communities all across Cleveland. Okay. So among other things, speeding cars is one aspect of that.
Yeah, I told him yesterday.
Uh-oh. Maurice, can you mute whoever? Are we good?
Good. All right.
Yeah, you should be, you should be good to go now.
Okay, cool. So I, as Joy pointed out, Ms. Joy and I live right on the corner of East Sixty-ninth and Seabert. And our neighbor across the street, her house has been hit by vehicles a number of times. Not always reported to the police, but we're estimating somewhere around six times in the past five years, both in the front of her house and the side of her house. Number of neighbors have reported vehicle accidents along East Sixty-ninth Street. And pretty much everywhere we go in our community, people are talking about traffic, safety, and speeds as a concern, erratic driving. So we had a conversation with our councilman a little over a year ago, and we raised this as an issue and started talking about what is it that we, as residents, can do for our part? And so he referred us to the Street Supplies Program at Noaka and to Callie, Callie Mearsman, who has been an excellent advocate for us, educating us and helping us think through some of these issues. Like Joe said, we did traffic counts with Engineering a year ago and found that, you know, we don't have consistent high speeds, but we have a number of high speeders along our residential street. It's completely residential in our area. So as Joe mentioned, we have a lot of pass-through traffic as well. And relatively high traffic counts for the number of residents that we have. So we came up with some ideas as a group. We did a lot of research on safety and what other communities across the nation have done. We landed on the Street Supplies Project, and then we organized with a group of other neighbors last winter to talk about some, some additional ideas, designs, colors, templates. And so that's where we came up with this kind of green and blue-white kind of design. And the idea is that we couldn't necessarily paint in the street, but we could paint in the, in the turning lane right before you go into parked cars to kind of alert drivers to slow down a little bit at intersections and hopefully we can cause some additional caution. And yeah, so that, that's our background in our project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Next slide, please. So the locations here, so we're looking to do both a, a fall and a spring 2022 session, two, two different sessions in the fall and the spring. The red circles are the ones we're aiming to do this fall on October twenty-third and twenty-fourth. The yellow ones, we'd like to do in the spring. E Sixty-fifth there is in a sign review district, so we might have to go again for that one. But the other four here are all within that Warsaw Triangle neighborhood and all, all same designs. Next slide, please. So on the left are the areas in which we're proposing. As Tiffany mentioned, on these right-hand turns, as people turn onto the street, where we're proposing to install our, our paintings. These are all going to be done by volunteers. And on the right- And on the right-hand side is a sample, it's a similar design to what we're proposing, not the exact same, but fairly similar. We will have the delineators at each of the, the areas around them. Three to four for each one. And on Seabert, it was recently repaved, which is great, but that also means people, you know, tend to go faster on streets that are paved now. And so we'll have the double white tape around each of these. And then on Seabert in particular, we're going to, at this point, we're planning to glue, find a proper adhesive to glue the delineators on. But on Chambers and 69th, we'll be looking to bolt those on so they can be removed easily if needed. Next slide. Here's a, a smaller version of our design. These overlapping concentric circles that play off each other. We're working with Nowaka, of course, and these, our template will be all designed out of Mylar that we're going to be cutting at ThinkBox. Actually, I think I have that on the next slide. If you could go to the next slide, please. So yeah, we have, as I said, we'll be working at ThinkBox to, to cut out, out of Mylar, our designs. And then we'll be basically rolling over those on the street, putting down a layer of white first and then adding the blue and the green afterward. And so working with Nowaka and Street Supplies to provide all this material, which is extremely helpful. And, and we're still refining, like I said, some of the flex posts, the delineators at the sites, how many we need at each one. And then we'll be putting the double stripe tape around all of it. Next, please. So our volunteer plan is with the project before, ours is with volunteers as well. We do have several neighborhood artists who are going to be working with us. So we'll be pairing volunteers with an artist and a, either Tiffany and I, so we have two teams each doing several areas, two to three areas each. We'll be rolling on the paint, as I said, on October 23rd and 24th is our goal. And yeah, next slide. And for maintenance, Slavic Village Development will be storing the extra paint. The residents are going to keep an eye on the condition of these areas and will be touching up as needed at least once a year. The paint is graded for three to five years, it's normal traffic paint. But since, you know, they won't, theoretically, nobody will be driving over it that frequently, it should last for a while. And yeah, luckily, we have strong resident leadership in the neighborhood here, so we're confident that we can work together to, to keep this maintained. And we've already spoken with the councilman about this, and he was one who actually recommended Street Supplies, so we have his support as well. And next slide. And that is all. We'll open it up to questions.
Thank you, Joe.
Sorry, did Callie want to, Callie, I think Callie wanted to give a couple of comments as well.
Go ahead, Callie.
Thank you, Chair and Tiffany. So this project is for the same decorative street painting license. As you can see, it's a slightly different context in a more residential area with the crossing enhancements being the painted curb extensions. But again, this group has shown a lot of investment and creativity in improving the pedestrian conditions in their neighborhood. And just want to thank them for their work on this. And I look forward to joining them to help install it later this month.
Thanks, Callie. Commission members?
So this is coordinated with Traffic Engineering in the Streets Department?
Yes, both of these applications have been coordinated with Traffic Engineering to ensure that they meet the federal requirements for any sort of decorative elements in the roadway.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion?
I move approval. Also, thank you guys. As I said before, this is wonderful. And I think it'll, it'll also be a model and actually really necessary, I think, you know. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
I second.
And we have a second. Further discussion. Great job, guys, by the way. Very attractive. Michael, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker. August, are you there?
He might have left. He had something that was pressing today.
Curry.
Jeff.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Ly. Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Near West Design Review, this is for West 20th Street, Smith Townhomes, new construction, seeking final approval. Who's here for this one?
I'm here, Wes Harper with Horton Harper Architects.
Hey, Wes.
Morning.
Morning. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Go ahead, Wes.
All right, thanks. Well, thanks again for having me here. This is the second presentation to the commission here. We were here, I think, last month for a schematic review. Since then, we have went back to Near West Design Review, gotten some comments and presented the updated plans for the project to them. We were approved last week, and that approval was based on us adding some vegetation areas into the driveway of the project and then also getting some additional views of the two single-family home here of the project. And then adding the porch feature to a handful of townhomes on West 20th. We have been through the Block Club for this project as well as Tremont West Economic Development Committee. And we're not expecting any zoning variances here, and we're complying completely with the Townhouse Code in this multifamily district. So the, the project, I'll quickly go through the presentation. The project is located between Lorraine and Abbey on West 20th Street in Duck Island at the intersection with Smith Court. Next. Here's just a larger view of the overall site. Next. Some context imagery, and I'll just quickly go through this since I believe there will be four homes that would be torn down for this project. Those are shown here at the top. The home at the bottom left is the northernmost house on 20th, anchoring that corner of Lorraine. The bottom, two pictures to the right, we have the Morgan Laundry Facility across the street. And basically, we have a, a large surface parking lot along the sidewalk of West 20th Street. So we're kind of creating a new context here. I think, you know, trying to, to manage that larger scale, vast, open parking lot across the street, you know, kind of lends itself to the density that we're showing here. Next. Just some additional imagery along West 20th Place that you see at the upper left. Over the past couple of years, we've worked with a couple of clients to build single-family homes on this small alley. They're both three stories tall to get downtown views. At the end of the alley, we have the Burgess Development Headquarters. At the middle left, you can see Smith Court as it currently exists. There are a handful of new homes on West 19th Street, which you're seeing the rear end of those right now in a very similar scale to what we're proposing for this project. And then at the bottom left, you can see the one existing home on West 20th Place and the new home that was recently completed in the last couple of years right behind it. Next. So here we have a, an updated site plan to show the areas of vegetation in the drive. I know that's something that's working its way through Planning Commission as some revisions to the Townhouse Code, so we're not left with, you know, 100% concrete drives through these areas. And since we have two single-family homes proposed as part of this 14-unit project, you know, the, the aesthetic conditions back here are important because in many ways, it's the front door of two of these units. So you can see where the units join together. Along West 20th Street in the rear, you can see there's both plantings at the pathways and then also where the two units come together. Next. So here we have some elevations. I believe I first presented these last time, but let's go through them very quickly. At the top, we have the West 20th Place elevations. And so you can see at the right, moving from left or right to left, we have two existing new homes that have been constructed. You have the existing table roof structure and then structured directly to the left of that, which has worked its way through HDERS and neighborhood process. And so beyond those, you have three-story townhomes. They do have doghouses for roof access, but those have been specifically placed along the western edge of those units so as not to completely overwhelm that eastern facade of the single-family homes. Throughout the design process, you know, originally, we had those two single-family homes connected to one another. We decided to split those into two single families so that it's not a sheer wall of three-story construction behind the new homes and the existing home. The middle elevation shows the Smith Court elevation. You know, we're, we're basically maxing out at that 35-foot height for the top of the parapet for the units. And then, of course, the doghouses pop up past that. And along that, what that Smith Court facade, you know, we have similarly scaled homes to the east, which face West 19th Street. West 20th Street itself, you think we're kind of representing a middle density here with the townhome, the single-family homes to the left. You have a large mixed-use site to the right across Smith. The way that that site has been zoned, we're expecting, you know, a four-story mixed-use apartment structure. So we'd be below the expectation of that, but above the height of the existing context. Next. Here we have a planting plan. If we want to get specific, you know, we can go over this. Next. Here we have a material palette, five-inch exposure, light cement, light gray color, black metal panels, smooth finish concrete, and then our windows, black windows and black anodized camera. Next. Very quickly, here's an aerial looking towards the northeast. Again, you can see the, the building that we have at the bottom right is really just, you know, a take on what a four-story apartment building looked there in terms of density related to what we're proposing here. And then you can see some of the, the newer context that's been built over the years behind the project and the existing context to the north. Obviously, these townhomes would have excellent downtown views. And that, that impacted the architecture itself, where we wanted to have the roof decks towards the rear of the units on the West 20th facade to have unobstructed views of downtown. And it also allowed us to kind of integrate the doghouse into the overall facade. Very often, the doghouses are kind of an afterthought and just kind of popped on top of the roof. And here, we wanted to integrate it into the design. Next. Just some updated views. Here we have the updated renderings, which has a tree lawn along West 20th Street as opposed to the inset parallel parking. And that came about through the neighborhood process at Block Club and Tremont West Economic Development Committee and Planning Commission, or the planners in the area for that as well. So we decided to make that change. Next. If we want to get into the architecture, we can, but these are pretty basic renderings you saw previously. Next. Here you see the relationship between the existing context and the new townhome project. You know, we configured that northernmost structure to have the three-story portion into the existing context as opposed to the four-story doghouse portion. So we're looking to kind of step up as, head south. Next. Next. There's a view looking towards the northeast at ground level on again, I think this pedestrian experience along West, or excuse me, Smith Court will be a huge improvement to what's there right now through this project. Next. Next. Here's a view looking down the driveway that is coming off of West 20th Place. Next. Here's a view of the corner of Smith and West 20th Place. Next. And then here we have a view of the driveway that comes off Smith Court, where we've added, you know, a fair amount of vegetation, have softened this environment back. Next. I'll leave it at that. The rest of the presentation, I believe, are the floor plans of each unit. We'd like to go through those. We can. I don't really think it's necessary. But on each floor, we have habitable space per the Townhouse Code and as well as glazing requirements along those secondary facades. So again, we're looking to match the Townhouse Code in every instance here. And so with that, I'll open it up to comments, questions.
I move approval. Downing.
Second, Curry. David.
David, are you there? Looks like he's frozen.
Mr. Chairman, we have a Stephanie Filar with her hand raised.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Filer. I am a resident of 2038 West 20th Place. So my property directly abuts this project. Overall, I'm very supportive of this project. I think it's going to be a huge improvement along West 20th and along Smith Court. However, I do have some concerns that I've brought to Tremont West on a number of occasions and with Wes. And I, I really don't think I have received an answer at all on them around the two single-family homes and why they are permitted to be included in the Townhouse Code. There are at least four or five variances from the limited documentation that is available that would be required if those were treated as single-family homes. And a great deal of homes, as Wes mentioned, in the neighborhood have been through the process of receiving those variances and then therefore the more stringent approval process through the Block Club, which I'm also on the board of, and I'm concerned that this, this process of including single-family homes almost as an afterthought packaged with a larger townhouse development sets a negative precedent for other projects that go on in Duck Island and in Tremont. I, I really haven't received any feedback despite really looking for it over the last several weeks. So why would these houses be exempt from the larger process? Why are they included as townhouses when they are consistently referred to as single-family homes?
Wes, could you go back to your site plan and just kind of elaborate a bit? Because I want to get a clear understanding on what the young lady is alluding to. And I'm assuming it's the two buildings, six and seven. Are you referring to that, ma'am?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, no, no problem, Director. So a little bit of the history on the project. We originally had these two units connected as townhomes, you know, to be sensitive to our neighbors. We wanted to split these to create, you know, a gap between the larger structure. Now, in terms of your question, Stephanie, historically, you know, if the percentage of single family homes in a townhome project are relatively low percentage, I don't know exactly what it is. I defer to Commissioner. You know, it's been included as part of the overall townhouse review. Units that we did over on Follett Court, five unit project, there were two sets or two buildings of two units and then one single family home. They were all over the townhomes. I think maybe the logic in this instance is that, you know, if we simply attached the two single family homes, you know, it would eliminate this concern for them being single family. So I would say, you know, historically, this has been the direction. This is the feedback we've got along the way, is that if the percentage of single family homes is low compared to the rest of the townhomes, it's been reviewed as a townhouse project.
So with respect to the Follett project being a precedent for units and a single family house that also was fronting the street, I don't agree as a precedent for a project larger like this. And it also doesn't really answer my question of why, why is this included?
I'll attempt to respond to that with respect to why is it included? It's because it was part of the overall larger footprint of the development. And as he indicated, it was intentional that building six and seven were split in order to kind of respect the context of the neighborhood. That's why they were split. But they are a part of the actual overall development site here. So that's the why. It's not complicated. It's just straightforward that this is part of the actual development. And originally, they were connected.
So if those are now split, are they required to go through the variance process that everyone else in the neighborhood goes through with their single family homes?
I'm back here. I'm sorry about the interruption.
Repeat your last, ma'am. I'm sorry.
My question was, I understand that the decision was made to split them. Now, are they subject to the process that every other single family home in the neighborhood has been subject to?
Are you talking about with design review? Or you're talking about a variance process? What variance process would this be required to go through?
Both. So if these are single family homes, they are subject to a number of variances around side yards, around the setbacks. And that has not been discussed because they are consistently presented with this project. So my question is, if the decision is made that these are going to be physically separate, single family homes, are they now subject to the same process around variances and around design that the rest of the homes in the neighborhood are subject to?
Mr. Chairman, we have Matt Moss with his hand raised. The planner for the area.
Go ahead, Matt.
David, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to this, Director and Mr. Chair. Normally, because we have the townhouse code now and we have projects, we have a route for projects like this to receive building permits without needing zoning variances. We have code that developers are able to understand and actually build to. We've, this design review process has proceeded in advance of there being a building permit application. So once Wes and the applicant for this site submit a zoning review application, it will go through the zoning review process through billing and housing. And it's likely that because we have presented amendments to the townhouse code to specifically identify where projects like this would be permitted by right. So it's very much likely or even possible that a zoning review by billing and housing for this case would return zoning variances for building six and building seven. And in that case, it would be up to the applicant to decide to apply for a variance because this is the kind of project that they want to build and market to homeowners or to revise the project to comply with either the townhouse code. It's my understanding that the applicant, as part of the variance process in this community, it's been long understood that projects seeking variances attend a community meeting typically organized by the development corporation at the block level and then also present to the board of the CDC. It's my understanding this project has done that regardless of whether they need zoning variances or not. So it really will be up to the applicant to decide if they submit this plan and it receives a notice of nonconformance for any part of the project, that they then get to decide if they want to revise their project or proceed with a variance request through Board of Zoning Appeals and through that community process. So that's the future for this project as I understand it, and I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
Thank you. That clarifies for me. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I was muted. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mike, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luke.
Luke is gone for the rest of the minute.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Flight.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Design review. This is proposed demolition of a two story apartment building seeking final approval under Cleveland Codeified Ordinance 341.00A. This is located at 14620 Lake Shore Boulevard. Who's here for this one?
Valencia White with the City Building and Housing Demolition Bureau and also Alex Abramowitz.
And who else is with you?
Alex Abramowitz.
Hi. Hi, I'm with the demolition bureau as well.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Planning Commission. This building is located, as he had mentioned, 14620 Lake Shore Boulevard. And we're seeking approval for the complete demolition of this structure. The current owner lives out of state or out of town in Columbus, Ohio, and also in Philadelphia, PA. They're owned by a group called G3 Management Group LLC. And they purchased the property in December of 2020. They have attempted to try to bring it up to coal, but once they got into what it actually cost, they found out that they could not afford it. And it's currently back on the market. So this property has been condemned for over a year and it has been vacant for over six years. We've received complaints, over eight complaints and four boardups that Building and Housing has had to pay for since 2008. The current taxes on this property are over $1,000. Councilman Polenzic is in support of this demolition. And we also have had the support of the the neighborhood development. You could go to the next slide. Next slide, please. Excuse me. You can go to the next slide. So this is the site location and context where you can see how it relates to the other properties in the area. The next slide has a closer context view of the property as it relates to different properties in the area. There isn't any parking associated with this lot except for the parking that's available on the street. The bottom picture shows the back of the property. The next slide. The adjacent properties are well maintained, as you can see from this photo. The property to the west is owned by Timothy Austin and Deborah Abdul Rahim. And the property to the east is owned by Central Real Estate Holdings Company. Next slide. The property across the street on Bonniewood is owned by Robert Michael Gurick. Again, it's well maintained. Next slide. So these are some interior photos of the structure. The top picture is the first floor in one of the west units and the bottom picture is the west part of the basement. Next slide. This is a, the top picture shows the east unit and then the bottom picture is a picture taken from the Xillow and Realty.com photos of interior pictures. Next slide. This is the stairway and another interior photo. Next slide. And so our site plan is to, after the demolition, graded and ceded per our city specifications. Next slide. I'll ask Alex to take it over from here.
Sure thing. So we had been meeting with the area's Design Review Commission and they instructed us to try and get in touch with the owner and get a better sense of their plans, which I was able to. And essentially, this, the group that owns this property got in way over their head, is the simplest way to put it. They purchased this property for something like $60,000, I want to say. And it's just a shell. They got a rehab estimate, which is over $220,000. And they've decided that that just doesn't make sense to pursue given the rents they might be able to get out of this. Putting in that kind of money doesn't make sense. So now this property is listed on Zillow for $65,000 and they're just trying to cut their losses and get out of here. Excuse me, not cut their losses, make a little money. But the truth of the matter is, having probed this one with the CDC as well, there isn't really interest in this property. And then we've sort of probed around that and tried to see what's out there. But this is, this is just a, it's a historic structure, to be sure. It's plenty old and it's a shell and that shell is in good shape. But this would be a serious renovation project and it has sat for years and years and we have not seen anyone come forward to make that happen. So that's where we're at now. And if this property were to sell, of course, a new owner would have the ability and a window of time to pull permits and rehab the structure. But, you know, an approval from this body would not inhibit that process. This is just one step in that. So.
How many units are in the building?
This is a four unit structure.
It's a shame it's left wide open like that. Commission members?
I have move of approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I just think the 220 is very low. I don't know who gave them that estimate, but there's no way that's getting rehabbed for 220. So there you go.
I agree with you. It's not going to be renovated for 220 and it's left wide open. So who knows about the, just even the tuck pointing on the building. So.
Clearly plenty to do there.
Yeah. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Flight. Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. It'd be nice if they found somebody, but that is not a good estimate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Downtown Flats Design Review, St. John's Cathedral, seeking final approval. This is at 1007 Superior Avenue. Who's here for this one?
Good morning. My name is Terry Fields with Berardi Partners Architects. I'm here for this one.
Okay, Terry, raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. Yeah, St. John's Cathedral at the intersection of Ninth and Superior. The diocese would like to install an ornamental fence along East 9th Street from the southern part of the entry of the church there alongside, and then along Superior down towards, well, as it's marked, and that would be the end of their rectory. This is in conjunction with other site work that's going on in celebration of their big banner anniversary year. We've been before D-RAC one time before, received, I believe, approval yesterday with concessions made that we reduced the height of the fence slightly from three, from two feet, six inches to two feet. And we made a couple of other adjustments based on those recommendations there at the southwest corner there at the intersection that involved having some, you know, a different configuration of the fence and a monument sign. So that is, if you move to the next slide, please, I think is next floor. Yeah, you can, that's, you know, an elevation showing the height of the fence in relation to the church and the sidewalk. If you move to the other, the next slide. That, yeah, this is an enlarged plan of a monument sign that is hoped and intended to get placed here. And the, one of the comments back from D-RAC at the last, at the meeting prior to yesterday's, was to look at, prior to this, we had the fence making a right angle and now it's been, you know, at the corner there and we've adjusted it to chamfer into the proposed monument location. We also received some feedback about what type of landscaping to integrate into that little corner there. And we're totally on board with handling it in that fashion. So, yeah, and this, and then the other issue, I believe, had to do with a general configuration of the fence and we've changed the fence style. And then if you move on to the next slide, you can just see a couple of renderings of it in place. So we're here today seeking approval for this fence.
So Terry, this is depicting the changes after Design Review's comments, from what I understand.
That is correct. Yes. Well, I'm sorry. I say that, but.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry. Pardon me. I realize that, yes, it's true, but we made it regarding your question, the answer was, is yes, but it's not wholly. The, we don't have the concession of a six inch reduced height fence in these renderings. I just wanted to be clear on that. Based on the oath I just took.
Okay. So this is the height you're proposing, which is a little different.
Well, no, I'm sorry. That's, we submitted these to CPC, you know, a week or so ago. This fence that's shown in the rendering is 30, 30 inches tall. Yesterday, we were asked if we would be willing to drop it a little Yesterday, we were asked if we would be willing to drop it a little bit and we said yes, to twenty-four inches. The fence shown is indeed thirty inches. It's not the twenty-four that we agreed on yesterday.
Okay, so, but your testimony is that you are going to reduce it when it's constructed to concede to the lower fence?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commission members?
I move approval.
Downing.
Second.
We have motion and second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Flash.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck.
I thank all of you. Appreciate it.
So, new signage proposal, seeking final approval. This is located at two two one seven East Ninth Street. Who's here for this one?
I am.
Who is I?
Oh, I'm sorry, Fred Span, Modern LED Lighting Services and Signs.
Okay, Fred, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Fred.
Uh, so basically, my understanding is the, everything has been approved to this point, other than with the concession of making it enclosed, the existing sign. Is that correct? Hello?
Yeah, so it says conditions, the existing project structure is enclosed at the top roof covered.
Could, could you go to, to the next slide, please? Uh, the next one, please. Of the sign itself. Uh, the next one, please. So basically, my understanding is the, that the bottom there needs to be enclosed in the top as well. Is, is that the only condition?
Uh, that's what it says here. Hey Freddie, is the, is the planner for this area on the call?
I don't believe so.
Let me see, hold on one second.
Mr. Chairman, we do have Mr. Santora with his hand raised.
Oh.
Oh, go ahead, Anthony.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, there was only one condition from the Downtown Flats Design Review for this project. And it was if there had been a roof structure, an enclosure to shed rainwater on the top of this, that they mimic some type of enclosure on the bottom so that it reads more as a canopy than a marquee, but that was their only condition.
Okay. So Fred, can, are you going to do that?
Yes, yes. The, the only thing that I'm unaware of is if there is a top to that, to be honest. So that, that kind of, I guess, the whole case would be if there isn't a top, then I need to put a top and a bottom. I just need to enclose it.
Yes.
With a, it would be a, a black aluminum ACM panels, which is aluminum composite material. Basically, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's structural enough that it would suffice for the needs that are required.
Okay. Commission members?
I move approval incorporating the comments and requests from Design Review.
Second, Curry.
Motion and second, further discussion. Harry Madden, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Flash.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next one is Boulevard Road Apartments, new construction. This is at one zero six zero and one one two seven Boulevard Road. And who's here for this one?
Um, I, this is Chris McKean with Samara Road.
Chris, are you the only one speaking today?
Also with me is Travis Krether with Dismon Architects and Andrew Donches is also with Samara Road on the line.
So if all of you can raise your right hand and then when you say I do state your name, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
And your name, please.
Chris McKean.
I do, Travis Krether.
I realize I'm muted. I do, Andrew Donches.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Well, good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning to review our conceptual multifamily residential project on Boulevard Road. Samara Road acquired these properties in 2019, the ten twenty, ten sixty and eleven twenty-four properties along Boulevard Road. We've recently completed renovations of our hundred and six thousand square foot office building at ten twenty Boulevard Road, including a new lobby, top deck and new space. And we're looking to further our investment in the area in the uh, great area we have here with connectivity to life and sports entertainment. We think a high-quality mixed-use residential development could be another complementary use here along Boulevard Road and improve the experience. So we, we entered into this process and looking for conceptual conceptual approval, conceptual feedback, really. And that's why we're here this morning. I'm going to get out of the way and let Travis Krether with Dismon Architects guide us, guide, guide you through the product a little bit more. So Travis, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you to the commissioners this morning. As stated, let me just kind of get through some, just initial product information here in summary. We are two parcels, ten sixteen, eleven twenty-four Boulevard Road that we plan to consolidate into one property. The neighborhood, the downtown neighborhood, it's in an S I, or semi-industry zoning district, which once you follow the path of the zoning code, it allows for multifamily within this zoning district. The, the proposed building, if the conceptual state is around two hundred and seventy-two thousand square feet. The site in the first level is just over an acre, fifty-three thousand square feet. Uh, we're looking at a seven-story building around eighty feet in height at this point. And the multifamily component will have two hundred and three units. And there will be two hundred and fifty-four parking spaces, which I'll get into a little bit more once I share the, the floor plans with you. Uh, we're looking at at least a minimum of five percent for the zoning code for bike parking. And some of our initial sustainability goals in certifications will be determined once we kind of get into the project a little further and understand any tax abatement benefits that Samara, uh, Samara Road might take. Some of the initial ideas for the sustainability, one is sort of, you know, we're reusing a brownfield site and potentially the existing parking garage. Um, we also will be providing support for alternative transportation, electrical, electric vehicle charging stations. Um, we'll be looking at green roofs with a landscaping on the rooftop amenities. A reflective upper white roof, day lighting, operable windows and LED lighting. And, uh, you know, as we move through design and development of that sign, we will continue to kind of hone in on those goals, share those with you. Um, we like to create an initial, kind of just a basic statement for each project that we do. The goal here for the Boulevard Road project is to help contribute to live, work, play environment that is already found in the Gateway District. And also to activate the street and help create a more vibrant pedestrian experience that's very lacking there on Boulevard Road, as well as Erie Court on the other side of the building. And we hope that these connections that we're creating will help tie the Playhouse Square area and the Gateway Stadiums together. Um, as far as the design of the building, we intend to respect some of the historic buildings that are in that, that district in that area in particular, but introduce some more modern materials and really create an aesthetic that's more of a modern industrial look. And I'll get in some precedent images later in the presentation to show you what we're thinking. Next slide. So the next few are a series of locations. You can see here our site identified within the Gateway District, uh, next to the Erie Cemetery. Next. This is just a zoomed-in version to give you a little better look where the site is positioned within the downtown area. Next. Uh, this is a, an audit survey that was initially done. Uh, Boulevard Road is indicated to the north, Erie Court to the south, adjacent to the Erie Street Cemetery. And on the west is East Ninth Street and kind of off the page here to the right is Prospect and Fork King Street. Next. So this shows Samara Road's three properties that they own currently. The one on the left is the office building that Chris had mentioned that they have recently renovated and are now leasing. Uh, the middle property, ten sixty, is the existing parking garage. That garage is a two-story structure, but we are investigating the ability to build on top of that because the, there is a ramp that actually extends up to a future third story. Uh, so they're doing some structural investigations now to kind of understand what capacity of that building could be so that we can maintain it and reuse the, the parking garage. Uh, eleven twenty-four Boulevard Road is an existing one-story parking garage. And that building is planned to be razed at this point for the new development. So ten sixteen, eleven twenty-four, two properties that we will combine into one project, to one property. Next. So the, the following here are a series of contact images. The, the image to the left is showing the, the newly renovated office building. Uh, and to the left of that directly is the existing parking garage with the murals painted on it. And then the two to the right are showing just some close-ups of the, the existing parking garage. And that building, not, no historical significance, really not a whole lot of architectural significance, but we are going to investigate what we can do with the building. Whether it's re-scan or maintain some of the portions of it, including potentially some of the murals there. Next slide. Uh, again, these are just some additional site contacts along Boulevard Road. Uh, the office building primarily being shown here. And again, I think we're going to, you know, play off that building, some of the historic features and the brick, at least on the lower levels of the, the parking areas in the lower levels of the project. Uh, one thing you can note here as well, the image to the upper right, Samara Road has made some site improvements already along the front of this building. I believe they worked with the historic Gateway District on East. And they, we did sidewalks and did some planning along the facade here. Next image. So some additional projects or buildings on Boulevard Road, the Armory, the Cleveland Graves Museum there. The, I think it's Wynton Apartment Building directly across the street. And then there's the, the office building, the lower right-hand one, it's white and gray. Lot of surface parking as well on the street. Next image. So now we're moving to the south. This is on Erie Court. In the upper left view, you can see the wall, which is about eight to nine feet tall, up against the cemetery. Uh, and that wall continues the, the entire length of Erie Court. Same image in the lower image, you can see the one-story building that we plan to raise. And then the other two images on the right-hand side show the, the backside of the parking garage, which is where the ramp to the second floor is located, as well as two other access points there. Next slide, please. So the, this is the proposed first floor. As I had indicated, there's two hundred and three apartments and two hundred and fifty-four parking spaces being proposed. And, um, you know, as indicated, we're still in the conceptual planning stage, but we may reduce some of these parking based on integrating services into the building. Uh, one thing that we can build off of is the first floor of the existing garage seems to be designed to allow taller vehicles to get inside. Uh, so there's opportunities there to potentially bring moving trucks and potentially even trash vehicles to keep everything within the footprint of the building. Uh, but that's something that we will have to continue to explore. The white bar in the left-hand portion of the building that, that runs up the middle there, that is the ramp and it divides that first floor parking into, into two. There's two hundred and fifty-four spaces and two hundred and three units, so that's more than one to one. However, we're looking at a shared parking agreement with the office building adjacent to Samara Road that's just completed. And they're actually, on the far left of the plane, you can see an arrow going into that building. There's actually a physical connection there and opening. Uh, so the idea is for Samara to continue to provide parking from this existing lot for the, the office building they currently are managing. So. Uh, also important is to help activate the, the Boulevard Road street. We are looking at some retail and potentially some amenity space along the street to really help activate that area. Uh, one of the ideas from one of the, from the advisory committee yesterday was looking at potentially, uh, looking at the existing garage, which has a little higher first floor area to put the retail. So that's something we're going to explore a little bit more. Um, the other thing that came up yesterday was not only trying to make sure we activate Boulevard Road, but also to activate Erie Court to the south. It's kind of more of a secluded street, narrow sidewalks with, you know, the wall against the cemetery and then brick pavers down the street. Some of the thoughts we had there is potentially looking at maybe some bike storage on the lower level that could be highlighted and some transparency into that storage along the walk. Um, and then as I move up to some of the upper floors, we can look at how we potentially could tie in some of the amenities, at least from an overlook and just try to use that to activate the street, potentially having some balconies and things like that to create activity along Erie Court. Next slide, please. This is the second floor of the garage. And we will make a physical connection as well on the second floor between the two garages. We use the ramp to access the new portion of the garage on the right-hand side there. Uh, next. So I'll move through the floor plans and I'll show you some sections, but the proposal right now for this building is to have a slight split level between the two parking garages. That's to try to just be more efficient, given that that first floor parking garage is, is taller. And so what you're seeing here is on the right-hand side, a partial level of residential. And then as you move up to the next slide, you can see the full footprint on the fourth floor, fifth floor and above. So at this fourth, third and fourth floor level, we'll have amenity courtyards. Those are the late sections of the plan. The residential proposal itself, the two hundred and three units, we're looking at a mix of studios and one bedrooms with a few two bedrooms spread throughout. And this is showing, you know, the potential for the courtyards and amenities and some green roofs, potentially a swimming pool, outdoor activity areas and those type of things along those courtyards. Next, our next slide. And this is showing once you move above the courtyard level, kind of standard stack of the five stories of, of residential. A couple of things to note here. A couple of things to note here with this plan. Um, on the right-hand side, we're holding back the residential component, uh, twenty feet, um, against the property line, uh, assuming that the adjacent parking lot, uh, will someday be, um, developed. And what we're trying to do there is make sure we maintain a healthy distance between the property line and the building to offer windows, uh, and, you know, I think likewise, any future development or code will have to hold back on that side, um, for various reasons. Um, so there will likely be about a thirty to forty-foot gap between the two buildings to allow airflow and, and light in. On a similar note, on the left-hand side of the plan, we're showing the building pool back there as well. Um, that's up against, uh, the office building, which Samara Road in that renovation has added some windows. Uh, and it also allows us to, to maintain some, uh, maintain some windows along those studios on the left-hand side. Okay, next slide. So this is the section, uh, that we put together. Again, on the right-hand side of the top view, you see the, uh, existing parking garage, the two levels, uh, in pink there. Uh, what we're trying to accomplish is a podium, uh, that will, uh, rely somewhat on some of the existing structure, hopefully, but also potentially, uh, supplementing the structure. And with that podium, that will give us, uh, the ability to make some adjustments with the, uh, upper levels of the wood framing, uh, the residential framing. And as you can see, there is a slight difference in, in height between the new garage and the existing garage, which creates that split level amenity space. Next slide. So we've done a couple, uh, high-level massing studies, just to kind of get a, an idea of, of the, uh, the form within the context of this area. Um, at this point, we haven't started to apply finishes, but some of the following slides will show the precedent of that kind of modern industrial look that I had spoken of earlier. Um, so we feel like at this point, the, the massing is, is well situated, uh, within, the, the massing. If you go to the next slide, it really demonstrates, uh, how within the downtown district, you know, some of the taller buildings, more in central business district. And as the, you know, the buildings kind of step down as they move towards the stadiums and the, uh, Erie Street Cemetery. So we feel like this is a very appropriate scale and massing and form. Um, likewise with this view, I think that, you know, with having the projections out the back, um, it really starts to open up towards the cemetery, and it really helps to tie some of those amenities into the views in the cemetery and to the views of the stadiums. Whereas on Boulevard Road, we're gonna look at keeping, uh, you know, maintaining that kind of street wall, uh, that's presence, present on the, the streets in this area. Um, and we'll look at some, uh, manipulation or articulation of the façades along that, that, uh, that Boulevard roadside as well, but, um, generally it will hold a, a strong street wall, uh, and help kind of define the street. Next slide. Okay, the following, I think, two or three slides here, again, just show some precedent images. Uh, these are various projects, um, that kind of, uh, define what our initial thoughts and intentions are. Um, I think there's gonna be, you know, this look of some remnants of, of, uh, you know, brick that, that kind of supports the historic nature, uh, but also introducing some other materials, whether it be metal panels, um, or, uh, fiberglass, but to maintain kind of, uh, some historic looks, kind of windows or windows that work with kind of the historic look. Uh, looking at elements like balconies as well. Um, and we kind of like this, kind of, uh, black highlights with the windows and some of the materials kind of give it more of a classic, uh, look. Next slide please. Uh, again, these kind of speak for themselves, but it kind of gives you a taste of our, our initial design intentions. Hmm, the last slide. Um, these are just showing some, um, initial, uh, precedent on kind of a split level, uh, amenity space. Uh, also to the upright, um, some thoughts on maybe how we handle, uh, and soften up some of the façades uh, against Erie Court, away from kind of the more historic area, and looking at alternative materials there for use. So again, that's, uh, you know, very early, and, uh, you know, we wanted to get, uh, this project in front of the, uh, advisory committee yesterday and the planning commission today, uh, and get initial feedback, thoughts. Yesterday was very valuable for us. Um, got a lot of good input from that, uh, commission, or from that committee. And I think some of the things that were important to them, uh, was to, you know, not just focus on Boulevard Road in regards to enhance, but also see what we could do along Erie Court. So we'll continue to look at that and develop that. Um, and then also connecting visually, um, on the Erie Court side of the building, uh, and tying in those, uh, amenity spaces and potentially some additional ground level spaces. Um, one other item that came up is that there was concern about demolining the existing one-story building too early, so they asked if, uh, you know, we would hold off on, on any demolition of that building until, uh, construction was ready to be started. So those were the three conditions based on their approval yesterday. And with that, that concludes my portion of the presentation.
Thank you Travis, very complete presentation. Uh, commission members, questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say it's a wonderful project. I, obviously, our offices are downtown near there, have been for a while, and I just, I love this street. I think it's just such a under, kind of appreciated street and asset, and I think this is an extraordinary project and opportunity, and I just wanted to thank you guys.
Anyone else? I have to say, I really enjoyed the, uh, the images that you show with the negative corners in it too. I think that kind of opens it up to, you know, the cemetery and some of the views back into the city and towards the lake, so, uh, nice inspirational shots that you used, thank you.
I saw some context that exists, so I think it was really good as well, thank you.
I'll move approval incorporating the design review comments.
My second. McCray Scott.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Looking forward to seeing you guys again. Good luck.
Thank you all for your time, we look forward to coming back to this committee.
Yep, thank you.
Directors report. Freddie, do we have one?
Uh, yes, just three items really quick, uh.
Hey Freddie, can you turn up your microphone a little bit?
All right, is that better?
I didn't notice a difference.
Is that better?
That's better, thank you.
Charles Sly also has his hand raised.
Oh, Charles.
Go, go, go ahead Fred.
Okay, really quick, uh, three items. Uh, one, I'm sure everyone, uh, saw the, uh, uh, press release, press conference, uh, with respect to Bedrock. Um, that is, uh, part of the work around advancing vision for the valley, uh, yesterday. So, uh, we're gonna continue to, uh, work, uh, with that organization and our coalition partners along the River Valley, which is, uh, really key. And, uh, we're really excited about the, uh, prospect of connecting not only the lakefront, but our River Valley, uh, to our downtown. Um, really fulfilling this notion of shore to quarter shore. Uh, the other thing that I want to, uh, mention to the commission is that we have on October fifteenth, the Clark Fulton and Twenty-Five Connects Initiative, that'll be, uh, adoption projects. Um, those meetings will be off-site, um, and details will, uh, be coming soon. And then also on October, uh, first, our first meeting in October, we will be reviewing and adopting, or going through the process of adopting, if you will choose to do so, the Cheers Initiative, uh, in partnership with the Metro Parks. And then lastly, uh, just highlighting, as you all know, we, uh, hosted a symposium earlier this year with the Urban Land Institute, building a twenty-first century city as a, uh, somewhat of an, uh, informative initiative, uh, as a precursor to the update of our comp plan. And, um, we are going to be reconvening, um, some key stakeholders, uh, to review the symposium report, uh, talk about, uh, key initiatives, uh, and ideas that have come from that symposium. And, uh, you will be receiving invitations for that as well. So there's a, quite a bit of things going on before year's end, and just wanted to keep the commission abreast as what's to come. Thank you.
Hey Freddie, can we get a copy of the report, ULI report?
Yeah, it will be sent out to, uh, the invitees, uh, and it's being finalized, uh, now. And basically, it's a synopsis of the actual symposium, some of the key takeaways, um, and everything to kind of reorient it, or reorientate people, uh, to what the discussions were. Thank you.
Yeah, ULI does a really nice job. I'm always impressed with the cities that they've worked with in the past. Uh, councilman?
Yeah, just, just quickly, thank you, uh, thank you David. Um, just a request of the director. I got a message from, uh, Councilman McCormick. Uh, there was the, the mandatory referral related to, it was the Skyline Investments, the, the, um, the TIF for the Renaissance. And, um, I, I guess the request would be that, since this is an unnumbered ordinance, that means it hasn't been introduced on the council floor yet. I know that there's times where there's timelines that we maybe bring something to Planning Commission, uh, before something has been introduced at council. But just in, in, in cases where that's necessary, can we make sure that the local council member intends for it to be introduced? I think this one caught Councilman McCormick by surprise. Uh, admittedly, it's been a bit of a busy week on the council side, so, so it's, it's something that maybe we should have done a little more, uh, reading into. But just, uh, what I don't want to do is set false expectations or kind of, uh, you know, make it look like we're going around the necessary council authority with those kinds of pieces.
Understood.
Thanks.
Thank you Charles.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ben and Roger in the meeting.
All right, eleven o'clock, good job guys, thank you so much.
Everyone have a great weekend.
Too, take care sir.